Hello and welcome to the Monday, May 8th, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on May 4th. The Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier News. Can we please take roll?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd? Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here.
We have a quorum. I'll then take a motion to move into executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provide that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting where the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required, as permitted Section 7B of the Act. Resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset in the state of New Jersey as follows: One, matters to be discussed are legal matter, a residency hearing, and personnel matters. The matters to discuss in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we'll remove, we'll return from Exec approximately 7:30. Thank you. Hello, and welcome back to the Monday, May 8th, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education. Mr. Eckert, can we take roll, please?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd? Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mr. Marini?
Here.
We have a quorum. We could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, eternal.
All right, we are back from Exec, and I would like to first acknowledge the correspondence as listed. I don't really have anything crazy on the Board President's Report for this week, just I know it's Teacher Appreciation Week, Teacher Appreciation Week, so thanks again to the entire staff. I hope they enjoyed whatever surprises they had this week, and just thank you. All right, that's it. We'll move on to the Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. My Superintendent's Report will be a little bit longer. Let's start off with some more great news this week from Chris Ireland, our Supervisor of Fine Arts, who keeps giving us lots of good information. Hillsborough High School Theater student Danielle Biondi was recognized as a distinguished arts advocate as part of the 43rd Annual New Jersey Governors Awards after receiving a nomination from Art Pride New Jersey. Dani previously won first place at the New Jersey Festivals Festival in the category titled Democracy Works for an essay about her theater experiences and their impact on her life. Dani will speak to Congress about arts advocacy sometime in July as part of the recognition of her essay. Congratulations, Dani, you're doing amazing work. It's also exciting to share that the following HHS choir students successfully auditioned to be accepted into the following New Jersey all-state choirs. Teresa Alex accepted as an Alto Number One in Mixed Choir. Eliana Weiss accepted as a Soprano One for Treble Choir. Vanya Medina accepted as Soprano Eleven in Mixed Choir. Max Petrix accepted as Bass One in Mixed Choir. It's quite an accomplishment and honor to be recognized as some of the finalist high school vocalists in New Jersey. I also wanted to reiterate what President Marini said, that it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and in addition to appreciating our teachers, especially, we want to appreciate all of our educators, as there are many people in our schools who affect our children's lives who don't have the designation of teacher. So while we do want to make a special recognition of our teachers, it's all of our educators who are helping to educate our children. I did want to also mention that one of the things with a lot of the state cuts, something that we don't have here in Hillsborough, is a central registrar or someone who's in charge of residency. So one of the things I'm working on centrally with my administrative staff is putting together a consistent process that is done across all buildings. You're going to be hearing about this over the next couple of board meetings, because what we will ask through our Genesis system is probably some questions, and if people have some documents that are outdated, we may be asking for some residency verification along those lines, but it's something that I want to do to dot Is and cross Ts, as I am the steward of the Hillsborough Township Public Schools, and want to make sure we have good processes moving forward. So you'll hear a little bit more about that at board meetings, and also some communications from me moving forward. I also wanted to note that, right now, if you've been paying attention to our athletic program at the high school, all year long, we've been having a tremendous amount of success. And even right now, we have a lot of our spring teams are actually state-ranked. And Mr. Eckert, I can think of no other reason why our teams might be doing so good, except perhaps they were inspired by the New Jersey Devils' recent playoff success in Round One after bouncing back. I think most people here would probably agree with that. So keep up the good work, Hillsborough High School athletic teams, whatever your inspiration is. Finally, as part of my Superintendent's Report tonight, we have Dr. Mandelbaum here, who by request from some of our Board of Education members, wants to speak to everybody about school start times. It's a shorter ver, he has a longer version and a shorter version. This will be a shorter version where we can all learn some of facts from his presentation. And I wanted to let the community know who's had some questions about this. Shortly, the Board will be engaging in the strategic planning process. That process does take time, and perhaps coming out of that process with feedback from the community could be a change in our school start times. I want to be very clear by having this presentation here tonight, we are not changing our school's start times for the fall. There's a lot of logistical things that are involved, and I'm here on about day 106, and I'm not ready to make such a move, but we want to get as much good information as we can. So Dr. Mandelbaum, if you'd like to come up to the podium and do a little speaking, I do have your presentation and can move along if you need me to.
Do you have there something for me to advance it for?
I can advance it for you, if you tell me.
And I don't mind, you guys tell me how you want this. I can walk around, and do you want me to address the audience, the Board, whoever?
Right.
Whoever? All right. Thank you, everybody, and thank you to the Board for inviting me. Thank you, Dr. Zolby, if you want to.
Is it easier like this to tell me which slide to go to, or?
You can just.
Slide show?
Yeah, do slide show, and I'll just say next. And some of them, I'll just have you click through. All right, so I will try and be brief and give everyone an overview tonight. The, I'm the school physician for Hillsborough. I'm a pediatrician. I've been in practice in the area for 20 years. I'm the Chair of Pediatrics at Penn Medicine Princeton Health. And the cross-section of my role as a pediatrician, my role at the hospital as Chair, and then working in school health, really kind of led to looking at mental health, what we could do differently, and there's actually policy statements that came out about sleep and school start times in 2014, and that's kind of when we started to really look at this. And I'll walk you quickly through the science for a bit, but you'll see, it's pretty amazing. And so the science really supports this. I'll tell you how the implementation is possible. I'll talk to you about that, and then I'll leave it to you guys to think about more. So next slide. There's really three goals that, the first one is just understanding that sleep is important, right? And so I'm going to leave you, not just with the idea, some of us, I think, had this concept that sleep wasn't important, just inherently, you know, sleep when you're dead, those kind of concepts. I'm going to show you very briefly as an overview that sleep is super important to everything you guys care about. Learning, if that's what we're here for, your physical health, your mental health, safety, substance abuse. And so that's step one. If you buy that, the second portion of it is understanding that our adolescents are not getting enough sleep, and the main reason is wake times. And that wake time is because of what we set for school. And I'll show you why that is. And then if you buy those two, then it comes down to saying, what do we do about it? Like, what are our priorities? How do we help the kids? So that's the idea that we're going to get through tonight. Next slide? Next slide? All right, so you can advance a little bit further. So I'll tell you when to stop. Keep going, go, go. Okay, so stop here for, actually, keep going, you can get them all out there. Let's get the, perfect, all right. So the first thing is, schools right now, Hillsborough, most high schools in New Jersey, start high school before 8:30. Actually, 90% of them start before 8 o'clock, and probably, and the majority of them start before or around 7:30. So the guidelines are saying we should start at 8:30. I'll tell you why, but if you're looking to say, why are we going to make a change? This has been there for a reason. Anytime you're going to make a change, understanding the background, which is, this was never done with any purpose of educational benefit to teenagers. No one ever said, you know what we should do, is get teenagers to school at 7:00 AM because they'll learn better? It was done 100% for transportation. So we'll talk about the transportation piece, but this is not the way schools always were. For the parents who were in high school in the 80s or 90s, it's what we experienced, but the generation before that, that's not what happened. So there's actually laws in the books in Pennsylvania from the 1940s, schools have to start at 9:00 AM. If you're going to change and start earlier, you need special state dispensation, and that's still, no one listens, but that's still on the books in Pennsylvania. So this is not, there's not something you're missing from this. The second issue that people will talk about are that teens, so teens are not young adults, and they're definitely not older adults, right? So they might look like them, but we'll hear people saying, we get up early, teens should get up early, and there are two critical times in brain development in the kind of first 21 years of life, infancy and then adolescence. And that is one aspect of this, and the other aspect that teens are different than adults, and this is the big science piece, there is a shift in teenage years, 13 to 21, in when they sleep. They biologically shift and go to sleep two to three hours later, wake up two to three hours earlier, and I'll drive that point home, and I'll show you the data on that. That's pre-smartphones, that's pre-COVID, that has nothing to do with anything other than physiology. And so as we're trying to create the right educational curriculum for them, we have to understand that science. And then the third one of the mental health issues, and I'll just show you some upsetting data in a moment of what's happened. So you can start to go through things. So background information on sleep, and you can pull this all up. All right, yeah, and keep going, you can get the slide up. So let me just talk about sleep for a second. First, sleep is super important. Why do you need sleep? You need, on average, adolescents need eight to 10 hours of sleep, about nine and a quarter, and that what we see is that if they're falling under seven hours, you really start to see the detriment. If you were to survey, any school that surveyed, if you want to guess what the average student, with the average amount of sleep your high school students are, six and a quarter hours. And that's been consistent across every school district that we look at it. And what we see in that second portion of it is that when adolescents are not getting enough sleep, under eight hours, but definitely under seven hours, it impacts everything. So I will fly through in longer talks when you want to see the data. We'll go through it slowly, but it impacts learning, significantly impacts retention. And so if we care about that, not getting them sleep is detrimental to their education. It impacts mental health. I'll show you tons of data within the last couple of years. Inadequate sleep increases the risk of suicidality, substance abuse, sexual risk-taking. It increases physical health issues, obesity, I'll show you some heart attack data, it increases other impulsive behaviors, and then it increases sports injuries. And then, if you increase sleep, the magic reverses. All of it gets better, and there's tons of evidence for this. This is not even theory anymore. Next slide? All right, and you can come, get down to, so why don't kids go to sleep? Let's, first of all, I have two teens at home, so there's clearly issues about smartphones, and the kids want to stay up later, there's education that needs to be done. So the issue is not that they can't stay up till 2:00 in the morning, the issue is they cannot go to sleep before 10:30 or 11:00 on average. Physiologically, they can't fall asleep. And so there's a bunch of reasons that they could stay up later than that, which we have to address in any kind of, if you guys were to implement this, it can't happen quickly, it has to happen with education of why you're doing it, and getting parents and teens on board. But that middle portion of it, the circadian rhythm piece, and I'll show you some slides on this, if you're going to remember something, remember this. This is the biology. Their circadian rhythms are kind of what help kind of guide you when you're ready for sleep, it's where the melatonin is released. Teens have a two- to three-hour shift. So it is like you, 7:55, you guys might be tired right now, maybe you think you could fall asleep, but if you were home right now, you might not be able to, like, and you definitely couldn't an hour ago, right? You come home from work and you're exhausted. It is hard to fall asleep at 6:00 or 7:00. As tired as your body is, that's because of these circadian rhythms. And the teens have a shift, and I'll show you the picture, of a two- to three-hour delay. So they cannot fall asleep at 9:00. It's like telling you to fall asleep at 7:00. And normally, if you let them wake up, if you guys have teens, when are they going to wake up? They'll wake up, if they left to their own devices, they'll wake up late, but they would not wake up earlier than, nobody would be waking up at 6:00 AM for school. The only reason they do is because we tell them we have to because of school start times. Next slide? All right, so just getting into the science of it, it's melatonin, so there's, melatonin is one of the main hormones that gets released, that kind of induces sleep. What we see with all teens, and so of course, you can't say in health that this impacts everybody, but this is true in general across teens in every country. There's data now from all around the world, and this has been going on forever. And we see it actually in other animals as well, that there is this shift in puberty. We think melatonin is a pubertal hormone, and it happens two to three hours later, it impacts breeding in other animals. And so ultimately, boys and girls, two to three hours is the difference in time. So whenever you want to think about what it feels like to them, try to imagine shifting yourself two to three hours earlier. Remember the days where you woke up at 4:00 AM for an airport run, and how you feel. That is what it feels like to the adolescents. Next slide? All right, so there's four stages of sleep, only important because we'll get to the next slide, so you guys probably know there's REM sleep, there's deep sleep, which is stage three. Go to the next slide. So it's not just quantity. I told you guys it's six and a quarter hours. This slide's a little busy, but if you look at where that arrow is pointing, so that's as you go through eight hours of sleep on the horizontal axis. Those two black bars, that's REM sleep. So what you could see is REM sleep starts to really kind of hit in the last end of sleep, like six to eight hour mark, and it's that REM sleep that restores physiological well-being. So if you woke up at six hours, you missed probably half of your REM sleep for the night cycle. Next slide? And so when you're trying to go to sleep, this is what I was explaining before, you need two processes. You need your circadian rhythms to kind of match your body physiologically feeling tired. Next slide? And what you could see with adolescents is there's that shift. They're not aligning until about 10:30, 11:00. They just can't go to sleep much earlier than that. Next slide? All right, so where that leaves us, why are we saying that 8:30 is school start times? It's just the math of, if the kids can't fall asleep before 11:00, and you want them to get eight hours of sleep, they shouldn't wake up before 7:00. They wake up at 7:00, they need time, just like you guys do. Get dressed, use the bathroom, shower, and then transportation to get to school. And that process is generally an hour and a half. You need 30 to 40 minutes at home to be reasonable to get up, you know, all these, the kids care really just about their peers right now, right? They don't care about much else. They want to look good, they want to feel good, and then you need 30 to 40 minutes to get to school, and you typically, whenever school starts, typically your buses probably get here 20 minutes earlier for free breakfast, right? That gets, so that's where the 8:30 comes from. And then if you look at who's saying this, this is like the easiest public health thing to talk about. There is almost, there's no scientific kind of adversary to this. Everyone is in agreement with this. So we can go to the next slide, I'll show you, this is really everybody. Anyone who weighs in on this as a policy statement says this is what we should be doing, and I'll talk to you, and I'll show you, you know, where it comes, where the rubber meets the road in terms of legislation. Next slide? All right, so evidence that this works, so the data started, remember I said, we started to change this in the 80s? By the 90s, we started to realize we screwed it up, we started to have data about this, and that's why by 2014, the policy statements were like, we got to reverse this. The data now, we've seen lots of places doing this, and what we see is actually the evidence that it works. So we see improved education in terms of grades, improved attendance, improved graduation rates, we see improved sleep, about a half a minute to a minute for every minute that you change school start time. So the idea that they'll just stay up later doesn't actually pan out. And then we saw, actually, saw that teachers were, enjoyed their work better, their day started a little later, but they felt like they were talking to an audience in the beginning of the day that actually was there to learn. Next slide? All right, so mental health issues, and you can go through this really quickly, but let me show you. You guys know this, this is just my ER, so this is Princeton, '08 on the left and '15, and you could see, these are behavioral, behavioral health visits to our ER. This is really depression or suicide attempt, that's how you show, end up, these are kids under 18, so you could see the numbers almost doubled by 2018, it's almost tripled, and then you start looking, go to the next slide, no, you can keep going. Next slide, and you could see where they're going to start saying, so this is coming from the CDC in '21, now compared to 2019, a 50% increase in suicidality in 12- to 17-year-old girls. Next slide? And you can keep going through, this is, it's just slide after slide of showing what's happening. Keep going, and here, and just, actually, if you pause for a second, go, in terms of COVID, so I, this is slides from the CDC in Fort Health, and you could see, they, this is every two years, they put out this youth, this youth mental health data, and so you could see the trends in every one of these were increasing from 11 to 21. So COVID didn't help anything, but COVID was not the culprit of where we are right now. Next slide? If you want to talk about, is mental health impacted by sleep? And we're going to just fly through these slides, Mike, but like, you know, I'll just show you the headlines, and if you look, go back one, go back to the first headline, I just want to show you, every one of these are going to be from 2018 to 2022. This is all like, right now, evidence after evidence coming out. Daytime sleepiness predicts future suicidal behavior. Keep going, we'll just, and I'll just hit the highlights, go to the next one. Relationship between sleep and depression. Next slide? And you, just, you can imagine, if I'm including it, it's showing that there's a correlation. Keep, next slide? This is a crazy study, so decreased sleep increased sexual risk-taking, and they actually went on to say, what could you do about it, is change school start times. Keep going. Next, keep going. This is, this is about reducing sleep because kids are tired and increased substance abuse. Next slide? And we can just, well, keep going, and I'll tell you when to stop. So this is just one slide after the other. You're going to see a slide in a second on empathy, so insufficient sleep causing decreased empathy in kids. Next slide? Going, you know, the headlines are crazy, keep going. All right, so now, physical issues, go to the next slide. So are they impacted by sleep? If you want to, this is a great TED Talk, Matt Walker's a sleep therapist. Go to the next slide. We have, everyone says, like, how much does an hour make a difference? So you have daylight savings times. You flip an hour, in the hour after daylight savings time, where you lost an hour of sleep, there is a 25% increase in heart attacks in the ER data. And when you flip it back, there's a 21% decrease in heart attacks. So how much does an hour make to those people, and it makes a pretty big difference? Next slide? So this is, this one is about neurocognitive development and poor sleep in teens. Keep going. Yeah, keep going. Actually, that was a slide about multiple sclerosis, long-term multiple sclerosis risk because of decreased sleep in teens. All right, keep going. Now, learning, so I mean, I guess if, as a school, this is our primary focus, right? There are, so this is a great study, and I don't think this should be a surprise, if you have sleep deprived teens, and you want to say, how much are they going to retain? The answer is much less than if they actually had adequate sleep, and so, and there's lots of studies like this, and you can keep going through. That slide was a slide about attribution bias, so this was in the military, and it looked at where, what classes you took first period when you had to 7:30, and those kids statistically thought that they were not good at whatever the class was. So they chose not to do that as their major, because they said, I'm not good at that, because they were up too early in class and felt like they couldn't learn it. Keep going. All right, and let's, we can skip, this is the education portion of it. Sleep and athletic performance, one of my roles, I'm a medical advisor to the NJSIA, the athletic group that runs all of high school sports, and the medical advisory group has universally supported, so we unanimously supported a change in school start times. The NJSIA have not come out that as a policy statement, but the medical advisors, there is an implementation issue, but from a athletic perspective, if you go to the next slide, sleep is essential for athletes, and I'll show you, keep going. If we just stop here, we can go through each of these studies, but on the left are all the pros, and on the right are all the negatives. And so increased sleep increases reaction time, so it improves accuracy, and you could see this across tons of sports. And then if you look at decreased sleep, it decreases performance and it increases injuries. So if you care about sports, like, this is where the kind of meat of it is, and I've given talks with the Jets, the Jet, every sports, every professional team right now has a mental health expert focusing on sleep. So I gave a talk with the Jets' mental health expert on this, and I think if you keep going through, you'll see, we'll get to, this, this is running through the studies, you can quickly go through them, keep going. And so just stopping here, so Verlander right now is on the Mets, for any of the local Met fans, and this is in The Times from like, two years ago, and basically, he's telling Alex Bregman, who's a hitter on Astros, you're in a slump, how much are you sleeping? He said, you're not sleeping enough, Bregman sleeps more, goes on to hit like, 30-something home runs, and so, like, this is on a professional level, the difference that sleep makes to athletic performance. Teen auto accidents is a real thing. I don't know if you guys have suffered as a town, but locally with this, but we see this everywhere, that teens are inexperienced drivers, we know that driving sleepy is like driving under the influence, and what we've seen, and there's multiple places right now that have done this, as they change school start times, you see an impact in a decrease in automobile accidents, leading to a decrease in automobile fatalities. So this is no longer just about the school, but about protecting the community. Last, so Virginia did this, so there were, there were multiple counties that did this, and just in a two-year period, saw a statistically significant decrease in teen automobile accidents because of the change in school start time. Keep going. All right, so that's the science behind it. 2021, there was a summit, California did this, I'll show you the literature, California changed their school start times, and if you go to the next slide, there is a summary of evidence, so, and I'm happy to share these slides if anyone wants, and I'm happy to take questions afterwards. So that's the why. Overwhelming, we should do this, there's no reason we shouldn't, so how come we're not doing it? And so there's only a couple of reasons. This started as a transportation issue, so you have to figure out transportation, it's surmountable, it doesn't mean it's easy, it doesn't have to cost anything, so if you guys have three tiers right now, you don't have to not have three tiers, you just have to figure out how to roll it. And almost everyone is doing it where they're saying, middle school is probably, nobody should be starting school at 7:30, that's hard. You start middle school close to 8:00, you start high school at 8:30, you start elementary school at 9:00 or 9:15, you figure out the busing. You even say for high school, high schools don't have to end, if you delay high school a certain amount, they don't have to end the same amount later. There's fluff in every, you know, they've looked at it, and you could say, how much time do I need between classes? Can I cut out certain periods? So it's not automatic, you know, lots of places have delayed high school start time by 55 minutes, and ended the day 34 minutes later, so it doesn't have to be a one-to-one relationship. So there's transportation, there's sports, again, sports is made better by having more sleep, playing against other districts, there's sometimes an issue with lights, there's sometimes an issue with getting to away games, it is actually much easier if it's done across the board with, you know, so it's, when one school does it, it makes it a little harder, so this is why it'll be, it would be a little bit better if it was done either on a county level, which is hard, or a state level. Then there's people's schedules, you have to take into account, teachers, parents have to get used to it, so I appreciate you saying you're not rolling this out for the fall without thinking this through. And then the other stakeholders, although you guys know that the, it's not the tail that wags the dog, what the school does, everyone else in the town adjusts to it, you know, so you guys make your decisions and everyone else will accommodate. Next slide? So transportation, again, there's lot, there's some issues, bus drivers, and you know, again, you shorten, you get rid of a route, it could cost more, but that doesn't have to be the option. Next slide? And this is what's, so most successful school districts have done what I just said. Next slide? Sports, like I said, it really becomes away games, practices are not an issue, home games are not an issue. There's lots of solutions for this. And again, if this is about the kids, their sports are better if they get more sleep and they have less injuries. Next slide. And we can talk about implementation if you guys have more questions. Keep going. Next slide. Next slide. And again, just reiterating how important the sports are. Next one. And then there's schedules for everyone. This isn't going to make everyone happy. Some people will love it, some people won't. But that's not the, the issue is always, you know, you figure out what the right thing to do for the kids are. And what we're talking about, when you make changes to the school start time, whatever the, whenever you make school changes, right? The community is impacted. Some people, their schedules, people adjust to it. So you just need to educate them on why you're doing it and then give them time. That's not been a stopping point for anyone. It's just takes education. Next slide. All right. What did we learn in, about the schools in the pandemic? We learned that once there wasn't a transportation issue, nobody, I don't know, do you guys keep school at 7:30 as a start time or did you move it? Do you, was it at eight or? Yeah. So nobody intuitively wants to start school that early, right? If you remove all the other issues, you, you kind of know you should start school later. And what we saw was that kids then reported they felt better, right? And it's not just kids. Families will report, so the data will show that parents will say, my kid is back. They seem happier, they seem more well-adjusted, they seem less angry. I mean, they're teenagers, but that, that impact of sleep really does make a difference to them. Next slide. All right. So is it really worth the effort? And we're going to end here and I'll open up to questions. Next slide. I think that there's very few things, when we're looking at a mental health perspective that you guys are in control of, you could do education, right? You could, you decide what your curriculum is. From a mental health perspective, you recognize early and triage, we're, we're talking about that at the NJ SIA level of like whether or not you mandate like education for coaches just so you have more people who see the warning signs and get the kids to earlier attention. But you guys have the ability to create policies, right? Policies based on science to say, you know, can we do this? Should we do this? And that really is the starting point where you could impact all the kids. Next slide. Keep going. And so whether or not you can do this, and let me just get to the legislation. So Mike, if you go, this is true right now in California. So California in 2019 passed the law, it going into effect this year. So California was the first state to do this and they said, high school 8:30, middle school 8 o'clock. Pennsylvania in 2019 had a bipartisan joint commission that looked at this and said the same thing. Next slide. You keep just filtering through. They just said, all the science is right, we should do this. They have not made a move yet, Pennsylvania. Keep going. There's lots of schools in New Jersey that we've talked to. Milburn did it. Next slide, Mike. Chatham is coming up. So there's me with a mask on at Chatham talking about it. Philadelphia. So interestingly, the urban schools, newer Camden, so newer Camden, Philly is moving to it. They start at 8:30, 8:15 to 8:30. They don't have a busing issue. So it's not an issue in the inner cities because it's a transportation issue. So Philly was going to move to 9:00 AM. They're just figuring out like some logistics. And so it's on pause right now. Next slide. And keep going. And this just came out. So anyone who wants to think about California as a progressive state, on Friday of last week, unbelievably, Florida in a bipartisan rule passed the bill to do the same thing as California. So passed the House, the Senate passed it. And if you look at that, I don't know if you could see the bottom line is the Senate. So that got passed on May 4th, 38 to 2. That was the vote. When was the last time you saw a bipartisan vote on anything? 38 to 2. So they're waiting for Governor DeSantis to sign this, but Florida is going to be the second state to move all their high schools. And they said the same thing. They're going to do it in 20, they just passed this now, it'll be for 2026. So they're going to give a kind of three-year rollout. They're going to give some incentives trying to do it early, but in three years, every school in Florida will have to do 8:30 high school start time, 8 o'clock as a middle school. Next slide. And that's from their law legislative efforts. So we actually have a bill in New Jersey for this. So Speaker Koflan has a bill and it is just kind of stalled right now. It's a election year and they have a few other bills they're trying to pass. So I am hopeful that New Jersey as a state is going to make this the case across the board. New Jersey wanted to start this for 2024. You know, everything, it's, it hasn't left committee yet. So it's got a while before this becomes anything. And what that means to me as an advocate for this, for the kids in this district is I would not wait for that to happen. I would implore you guys to take, you know, get your stakeholders and start planning for this because it's still to me a grassroots initiative to say, we should be doing this and not wait for the state. And if the state makes it so, it's still going to be left to the boards to implement. You're going to have to do all this work anyway. So this is where we are. Murphy said he's open to signing it. So what steps can you take? I went through, I just looked at your times and so you could just see there, like you basically have, you have 7:30 times, high school, you have a couple of elementary schools, you have 8:30 times, and then you have 9:15 times. So you have three tiers already. Figuring out how to make the, reshuffling your three tiers, probably not all that difficult. You know, it will take work, but it's not insurmountable. And this, we can just go to the end and then I'll open for questions. So there was a slide back there that says, to do nothing is to do, is to really to do harm. And that's kind of where I sit on this. Like, and I think the people who have advocated for this, it's hard to unknow this data. It is hard to think that we're sending these kids to school, struggling with lack of sleep when there's something we can do for it. So I think imploring you guys as a small group to think about it, dive into it, take some action and look to see if it's feasible. I think you'll do a huge service to a ton of kids.
Thank you, Dr. Mandelbaum. And thank you so much for breaking that down.
Thank you.
I know normally you, you go through all of those slides and I did ask you just for the purposes of time to condense it, but we will put that up on our website for anybody who wants to take a look at too. And before I open it for questions to, to the board, I did want to thank you also for introducing yourself as our school doctor. I forgot to do that when I introduced you. And additionally, if there's anything that you can do to help my Jets win more football games this year, I would greatly appreciate that.
More sleep.
That being said, board members, if you have any questions of Dr. Mandelbaum at this time?
Ms. Nurse?
Being a teacher in another school district in the area and also just looking at a lot of the research and the districts that have started, sometimes I look at that research and it's only adjusted 20 minutes or 30 minutes. We don't even always get to 8 o'clock for the high school students. So most of your research, is that based on the 8:30 high school start time or does it increasingly grow as the time grows?
I'll answer a similar question and tell me if this helps just. So the first one I would answer is, what's the smallest increment that makes a difference? Probably 20 minutes. So what we see is, once you start to fall under seven hours of sleep a night on average, every 20 minutes makes a significant kind of deleterious difference to them. So the bigger, the more sleep, the better the improvement. The schools that have looked and measured it, most of these studies, so most of the studies are comparing significantly differences in sleep. And it depends, some of them, the depression studies will look at six hours versus eight hours. Some of the learning studies were five hours versus nine hours. But Chatham, taking Chatham as a district to emulate, so they're a high performing district, athletics, academics, they made the change and their data this year from making a change of maybe 50 minutes or so, they see a statistically significant difference based on kids' own surveys on their mental health. We see attendance issues. They see grade, they see grade performance increases just this year. So I think the bigger the gap, the bigger the jump, the more likely you'll see a bigger difference. The higher the performing, the higher the district performs educationally, it's hard to get bigger educational gaps, right? It's not educational jumps. That's not where you see it. But I think when you start talking about making close to an hour difference in, and you'll actually recoup 40 minutes more of sleep, I think you'll see a statistical difference across the board for the kids.
So if Chatham is at 55, 0?
Yeah.
I guess, I'm sorry. What's, what's not clear to me is what time a child would wake up compared to what time they have to be at a school? And given the fact, you know, courtesy busing was eliminated in the district, so there are children that are expected to walk up to two and a half miles to school. So is the benefit equal for a child walking two and a half miles before school as it is for a child that is getting busing?
I, I would look at it differently where it's, I think the question is, how much time does it take for them to get transportation to school? Whether it's walking, I don't know how long it takes to walk two and a half miles, probably 30 to 40 minutes. The bus routes for some kids are 45 minutes to an hour, especially when they're not really, you know, some of the bus routes are not efficient. So what it really comes down to is that if they can't go to sleep, in the best case scenario, on average, they're going to sleep at 11 o'clock as a high schooler. If you want them to get eight hours of sleep, we really want them to shoot for nine and a quarter. That seems to be ideal. We want them waking up at seven. So the question is, can they wake up at seven o'clock, which would be part of their natural circadian rhythm? So remember, it's not, it's not just quantity. If you wake up on a day when you were in deep sleep and you weren't ready to wake up, you never feel rested that day, right? So they wake up at seven, how much time do they need to get ready and get to school? Whether they take the bus or they walk? And it generally, I think most people on average need 30 to 40 minutes, you know, I don't know, to get dressed and ready in the morning to actually tackle the day. You know, the high school kids who are coming are likely being shaken by their parents, dragged out of bed, you know, barely eating and having to then put their best foot forward. And that is not the right way to start the day, right? It's not how most of us start the day, right? We take our time, we have coffee, we do whatever we need to. So you have to build in what you think is a reasonable amount of time for them to get up, get ready for school, and then a reasonable amount of time for them to get to school from, once they're ready to go to school. And so on average, every, you know, if you have a small town, small walking district, it might be 10 minutes. When it was virtual, you had no time. You could just get up, if you had 8 o'clock start time and it was virtual, you could get up at 7:30 and be ready for school 8 o'clock because there was no transportation. So I think from a transportation perspective, your walkers versus your bus riders probably have the same transportation time, I would think. I don't, you know, I think it's an issue if you think that they're walking an hour and a half to get to school, that's hard on them, but they probably have the same amount of transportation time. So it's irrelevant for them. And I think 8:30 probably ends up being the right school start time. Much earlier than that, they're waking up at a time that they're not ready to wake up. Does that make sense? Does that answer?
It does. It's okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Again, Dr. Mandelbaum, thank you so much. I know we've been trying to coordinate this for a while and I really appreciate you giving us a truncated version, but like I said, all of your presentation will be posted on our website for anyone who is interested and maybe we'll be talking again in the future, but really appreciate your efforts tonight.
Yeah, for sure. And if the, if there's interest in an encore of like more detail and at a strategic planning session, if that's where you guys are looking towards, happy to give you guys the education. But I think the science is solid. I appreciate you guys listening. I think the question is you guys getting motivated to say, how implementable is it? And I would just encourage you to say, it's totally implementable. You just have to have the will to do it and you could do it. Thanks. And I'll, I'll let you guys have your board meeting. I'm going to go.
Thank you very much. And Mr. President, with that, that concludes my superintendent's report.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to the approval of minutes. So we have a 8-1 motion to approve executive session minutes from 4/24/23. I need that too, motion to approve regular session minutes 4/24/23. Can I get a motion in a second?
Sub moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll move on to the first public input session on the action agenda. We very much welcome in for the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time in the meeting where you'll open public comment. Members of the public are invited to comment, which may do if they're attending in person during the first public comment period. Members of the public may comment about items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be concerned, the residents of the school district, Esr 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forum is not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board in instance where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy. Board president or superintendent will address the comment. There are many times a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kelly note to the Public Meetings Act and privacy rights of public employees encompassed therein, do not permit the board to discuss personal issues in public session. If you come up for the first one, please state the action agenda item that you are speaking about before making your comment. Okay. Seeing none, we will move to the action agenda. I'm sorry, we'll go to, I guess, first.
Communications.
All right. So for, before we move to the formal action agenda, we have committee reports. We have the communications committee.
I'll be quick. The communications committee met last week. First thing that was discussed, the committee was interested in trying to find ways to get information out to the community wider than just the school community. So we had Mr. Joel Handler come and present a couple of options to us. We discussed utilizing School Messenger, which is the service that is used right now to communicate with parents. There would be additional fees involved in that as that would be with email, possibility of text and phone. But he provided a second option, which would utilize a tool called Smore, which is something that the district already utilizes. That tool would be web-based and we would be able to have community, community members sign up to receive a newsletter through that platform where information could be received. That would be at virtually no cost, but if any, very minimal. We looked and kind of agreed that we would follow that option first and find various ways to get information out to the community to enable them to sign up for that newsletter. We also discussed kind of adding to our, our social media communications and Mr. Marini as board president was going to look into creating a Facebook account that was specifically for the Board of Education where communication would come from there as well. Finally, we talked about perhaps while we have no new information as of now, we understand the community is always wondering where things are with the investigation. We discussed possibly, you know, giving a statement out quarterly unless something comes up before that. That's about it.
All right. Thank you for the minutes. Appreciate it. All right. We'll then move on to the superintendent action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under the area of education, I would ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Professional travel-related expenses, affirming the superintendent's harassment, intimidation and bullying determinations, approving staff for the English Language Arts Wraparound Program funded by Esr 2 funds, the submission of a grant application, the submission of an amendment and accepting the transfer of funds within the fiscal year 2023 ESEA grant, revising the partial FTEs of salaries paid by Title I ARP, Esr 3 retroactive to September 1, 2022. Motion to accept the American Rescue Plan Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief III Grant Funds in the amount as listed as follows. The submission was previously approved on June 14, 2021. Motion to amend prior action item, action item education 12.6 approved on July 18, 2022 to approve staff for 2022 summer individual and group counseling. Approving grant-funded hourly staff. And that's everything in education.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Sub moved. Second.
Any discussion by the board on this action agenda? All right. Seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Laningbeater?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Murray? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of human resources, I would ask for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Retirements and resignations as listed, revised sixth and seventh period coverage, revised leave replacement teacher for 2223, leaves of absences, transfers for 2324 school year as listed, approving contract changes for 2324 school year, approving appointments for 2223, approving appointments for 2324, approving the renewal of non-tenured certificated staff for 2324, approving the renewal of non-tenured HPSA staff for 2324, approving the renewal of non-tenured unaffiliated administrators for 2324, approving the renewal of registered nurses for 2324, approving summer athletic camps for 2023, approving summer enrichment program for 2023, approving the extended school year program for 2023, approving extra coverage, approving six-period coverage, and approving the suspension of a staff member.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Any discussion by the board on this action agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
I would like to abstain for 12.1 and yes for the remaining items.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes.
Thank you. In the area of operations, I'd ask for the board's consideration of the following motions. Approving the resolution for a software purchase, approving a resolution for lease purchasing of software, approving the contract for nursing services, approving a contract amendment with EI Associates, approving the resolution for submission of a project to the DOE, the disposal and sale of obsolete equipment, and a motion to accept a donation.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved, second.
Any discussion by the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marini? Yes, motion passes. All right, well, we want the comments from the public. We very much welcome input of the public. During board meetings, there'll be two 30-minute periods of time, the meeting will be open to public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be concerned of the residents of the school district, Esperbilo 0167. Before you see your comment, you'll be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instance where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hire or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass their end do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Good evening, Tom Isabella, Nine Up, Rineshanak Court. So my comment is in relation to, I guess, the last board meeting as it references one of the two proposed referendums for November. Specifically, I know I focused on one at one of the other meetings, but now I'm wanting to focus on the other, the security question. So I know it was made clear that whomever would be hired, whether it be ex-law enforcement or ex-security guards, you know, for this, that they are not to be armed. I was hoping to get a greater explanation, understanding of the reasoning behind that because quite frankly, if you have an individual who is trained in the use of a gun and God forbid, something happens in one of these nine schools and you have some intruder coming in with a gun and you then are relying on someone who doesn't have, a good guy, who has no weapon, to be able to neutralize, for lack of a better term, the threat. I, I just, it's almost, I would, if, if, if this is how it's going to be from my perspective, I would vote against it because I feel like they would, they'd be useless. Because, and also too, I don't know if it was thought about, but my concern would be, especially someone who is trained in the use of a gun, why would they even accept a job where they can't, they have that ability, they understand how to use a gun, but then they can't use it? I don't understand why anyone would want to take that. So just hoping, I know, again, it's not supposed to be a back and forth, but trying to understand that and hoping that before November, that could be explained in greater detail or who, who amongst you all decided that that was how it was going to be? And, and just trying to gain a greater understanding. So thank you very much.
All right, thank you for your comment.
My name is Tiffany Neal, I'm at Six Seater Hill Terrace. I don't have much to say tonight because Dr. Mandelbaum said everything for me, but I just want to echo everything that he said and encourage you to look through that PowerPoint when it gets posted on the district website later. It's an extremely compelling case and I trust that the board and the superintendent will be able to find a way to make this work for our kids because it's what they need, it's what's best for, for our students. And I know that's why you guys are all in the roles that you are. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no other comment, I will open up to the board for comment. Any board members would like to make any public comment? Ms. Stats?
Uh, this past weekend, the Hillsborough High School Theater Program put on performances of, uh, thank you for flushing my head in the toilet, I think there's another part to it, but, um, on Friday and Saturday. I attended on Friday and, uh, it was about the issue of bullying. It was very moving, I had some amusing moments. But afterwards, what was really impressive to me was, you had a lot of the performers and the crew, people in the background, the student, it was all students, did a Q and A with the audience and, uh, great questions from the audience and the students did a wonderful job, um, handling their, you know, their responses were so well-informed and addressed lots of different nuances. And I believe Ms. Medley, the supervisor of guidance, I think she had helped them prepare for it. But it, as far as that, those moments on Friday and Saturday, the students themselves handled the questions beautifully.
That's great, thanks. Any other board members want to make comment? Sure, I guess.
If there's no other comments, there, there's many of you in the room and I won't be able to say it before our next board meeting. So I want to wish all the mothers in Hillsborough a Happy Mother's Day that is upcoming. We appreciate all the things that you do for your kids and it'll be over by our next board meeting, so I just wanted to wish that to you now.
I think you mentioned sports, I think, I think the, um, the girls softball team beat the number one team in the state. So while not all sports events are created equal, that's a, it's a big accomplishment no matter where you're at.
Our girls softball team is doing an incredible job. They are undefeated, they were ranked fifth in the state, but they beat the number one team in the state. So as far as I'm concerned, softball team, you're number one in the state and I'm sure you'll prove it before the end of the year.
Absolutely, it's great. All right, um, if there's no other comments from the board, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you guys in a couple of weeks, thanks.